Okay.
Uh, the stream is on.
Okay. Wonder if Pat's accounted for the snow.
I think he's pretty, pretty skilled at it, he does.
Well, I'm seeing less than a minute. Is that what you guys are seeing as well?
I never know.
Clock seems early.
I wish I could be as punctual as Pat.
Well, there's a difference between punctual and, uh, uh-oh. We'll see.
I'm five minutes late here on the lot.
Should I text him? If he's driving, it's probably a bad idea.
Yeah, they're in that, um, nope.
So we just go by?
There should have been a file folder there for you. Yep, that's for him.
Actually, girls, when you may not, you may not have a question.
That would be exact about it.
For those that are watching online, I apologize, it is six P M., but I think our attorney is just pulling into the parking lot, so we'll give it another minute or two. What, your partner in crime Lance ain't here tonight?
Board closed session.
Man.
I guess Aaron's here. Said Ross is gonna be all alone without Lance, but I said, Aaron's here at least. Keep it lively.
Mm-hmm. I believe so. What's that? Is it? Do you wanna check just to make sure before we get started?
It's on.
It is on? Okay.
Mics aren't on, but.
The mics aren't on?
Yeah, mics aren't on yet, but, well, your mic is on, but.
Okay.
My mic's not on.
Got it. Hi, how are ya?
Not as.
How are you, Pat?
I'm okay. Okay. I'm sorry, Jason.
That's okay. It, it happens. Yeah, no, no. When, when you cut her, when, when you cut it close, it's about to happen. All right, are you ready, though? They called Oglesby City Council meeting to order, roll call, please.
Baldridge.
Here.
Cullenin.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Moyle.
Here.
Curran.
Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which the.
All right, number four, public comment on agenda items only. Seeing that there's none, we'll move on. Number five, approved minutes from November three, third, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting. If there's no additions, corrections, or modifications, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Shouldn't it be the seventeenth?
Should be the seventeenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
For the seventeenth.
For the seventeenth, yeah.
Got it, all right, thank you.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge.
Aye.
Uh, Cullenin.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Moyle.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye. Number six, approved bills presented for payment in the amount of eight hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty-eight cents. If there's no additions, corrections, or modifications, can I get a motion to approve the bills?
All I'll add on the bills is that there are two big payments, uh, one to I M E A and one to Bistering, so that's why they're a little bit, uh, higher than usual. So, uh, with that being said, I will, uh, motion that we approve bills presented for payment in the amount of eight hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Uh, Baldridge.
Aye.
Cullenin.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Moyle.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye. Number seven, approved payroll for November twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and three dollars and seventy-one cents. If there's no additions, corrections, or modifications, can I get a motion to approve the payroll?
I will move that we approve payroll for November twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and three dollars and seventy-one cents.
I'll second, Natalie.
What exactly, wait a second.
Hold on, hold, hold.
What exactly are you approving, because I haven't seen anything at all.
It's, it's in your drive.
It's in the drive now?
Yeah, it was added late.
One second, so, there's a motion, a second. Again, if there's ever a time that somebody wants to say something, so I apologize, I usually, that's just what the consent agenda, if anybody has anything, it's an open forum, so, um, do we need to back up from that, if somebody has a concern?
I think we do, because apparently.
I mean, you asked her your second, and then you didn't know what you were doing.
I read it already. Sorry, I didn't know you didn't.
I heard a motion in a second.
There was, we have a first and a second, yeah.
Okay, roll call, please.
Baldridge.
No, I haven't seen it.
Uh, Cullenin.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Moyle.
No.
And Curran.
Aye. Okay. Take a look to see if there's something wrong with the, uh, the share drive that not everybody's seeing, or something.
The issue is that it was added late.
Well, and it's black.
Um, I think that's an issue, yeah, they don't.
There we go.
It's on there, though.
Okay. Uh, number eight, uh, old business, eight, discussion and review of current travel ordinance, Moyle.
So, I wanted to put this in the agenda, and this is just my experience with the I M L conference, that the check was issued prior to me attending, and then actually, what I was being paid for, I didn't fulfill. So I did ask for it to be changed, which is very cumbersome for the clerk's office to have to reissue checks. So, after a review, and this is my fault, um, when we revised the travel ordinance in May, I missed that you were authorizing the ability to approve checks or issue checks prior to the event occurring. And I just, I don't think that's good practice. I think that reimbursement should happen after the event, in the event that my son broke his arm, I didn't even go, the check's been out there, or I left early, I could think of a hundred different reasons why. You wait till the event happens, and then you can issue reimbursement, so that's where I kinda wanted to start the discussion.
Okay. Um, I think this has already been resolved, but that's okay, we'll, we'll definitely go around the room and get everybody out there to talk about it, and then I can add the comments at the end.
Well, I agree, I think, uh, the check shouldn't be written until after we get back, like you're saying, if you broke your arm or something, or your, your ki-, one of your kids, you, uh, you're not gonna be there for the whole thing.
Baldridge. Yeah, I also had some concerns on it, I'd just like for everyone to be fair and honest here, uh, if some of the money you don't deserve from the taxpayers, don't take the money. It's not deserved, you d-, it, it, you shouldn't, you're not entitled to that money, so you should have the respect and decency to give that money back to the taxpayers, instead of taking something that's not yours.
Absolutely.
Comment?
Yeah, I think, uh, I, I, I think the idea behind, I don't, you can probably comment more on this, 'cause you were on the council prior to when I was, um, but from my understanding, the idea of, um, preauthorization was, uh, came from, I think, last October. Um, and so, that's kind of, I assume, why the checks were issued, um, beforehand. Um, but, no, I mean, I, I, I agree, I think maybe, I, I don't know, I. I, I, I agree with what, what everybody's saying, but I, I think that was kind of, um, to a certain extent, kind of a, uh, maybe a, a result of that ordinance ultimately being passed. Um, but, yeah, I, I, looking at the ordinance, I have a copy of it right here, and it does say, a receipt for any travel, meal, lodging, or parking expense, or event, uh, at a minimum, the following documentation must be submitted into writing, uh, to secure approval for any such reimbursement request. A receipt for any travel, meal, lodging, or parking expense, or in the event preapproval is sought, an estimate of the travel, meal, or lodging, or parking expenses anticipated to be incurred. I would assume the preapproval part came from that October ordinance that had been passed, um, last year. Um, but I, I do kind of agree, um, I, I think for the hotel, I mean, for lodging, I guess it kinda makes sense, unless you don't end up going. Um, you know, for parking, I mean, if, if we know what people are doing as far as parking's concerned, it's not really a big issue, I guess, but, um, the meal thing, I think, was probably the, the most significant thing, because you get a per diem of seventy-five dollars per day, and for the checks to be issued prior to that, uh, prior to you even attending the event, or the day before you go to the event, um, you don't necessarily know how much you're gonna spend on meals. Um, so I, I just think it's, it's kinda weird to do an estimate for meals, 'cause you don't know what you're gonna spend ultimately. Yeah, so, yeah, I.
Can I chime in here?
Yeah, please.
I was gonna give the history on it first.
You go right ahead.
Okay, so, long story short, I think it is resolved right now, it's been resolved. Up until twenty, before twenty twenty-three, how it always was done was, somebody goes, they come, they fill out a travel claim, and, and their receipts, and they get paid for what they're in cost that they actually incurred were. Back in summer of twenty twenty-three, I had an argument with the commissioner at that time, who wanted to change it to where everybody got paid upfront. I didn't agree with that, uh, I thought, I gave many reasons of why I thought that was a bad idea, um, but, he had consensus from people, and they wanted to make a change of that, and so, we did that for the years of twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. Again, not a fan of it, because it gave people a certain amount of money, uh, at a time, and not everybody spent the same things. The argument I even made afterwards was, for example, somebody might be taking shared Uber rides, somebody has to pay for the Uber, somebody doesn't have to pay. To me, when it comes to taxpayers, everybody should be compensated for what they spent. Um, so, that's how it was done for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, it was, I think, a check amount was three hundred fifty dollars. For some reason, this year, the check amount was higher, um, and to make matters worse, there was other things that weren't even included, um, like, for example, I think the parking was paid for, so, um, what we did was, I think, from my understanding, is everybody has come in and they've paid the parts that they needed to pay back for. Uh, so that's been resolved as of now. Um, so I don't think this is a problem going forward, I don't think it's an issue, um, but, if anybody wants to change anything, I think what we talked about, the plan going forward, is we are still going to preapprove a certain amount as a council when we go to these travel things, but then for everybody to get paid, they don't actually get paid until they submit their travel claim and their expenses that they actually incurred. That's my understanding of it, so, if we can go around, if anybody has anything else they'd like to add to it.
Yeah, you, uh, made the claim here that you bought it or argued it, but have you cashed this year's check?
I did.
Okay.
And I, and I recompensated back for what was, uh, not.
Well, I asked for that, but I got a two-inch stack of papers I can't return. Uh, the next question is, who did, how did this go from the three hundred and fifty dollars to the five hundred and forty-seven forty? Does anybody know? Why?
Three hundred and fifty's for lodging, I believe, and then the rest.
No. Three hundred and fifty dollars as he referenced before.
Three hundred for lodging.
One at a time.
So, three hundred for lodging, per diem of seventy-five dollars.
I read the paper.
Uh, I R S, I R S, I R S reimbursement for mileage. I don't think it says anything about. Is there anything where it says it's a three hundred dollar maximum period, or three hundred and seventy-five?
No, in the past, as he's referencing here, is, uh, the past was three hundred and fifty dollars, which we had agreed upon, due to the fact that a lunch up there will cost you a hundred bucks, I mean, fifty dollars, whatever, you're not gonna eat three times a day in Chicago for a hundred dollars, so.
Three fifty.
Oh, I. Yeah.
That was the consensus that we had reached prior to this, and, uh, it, again, was only three hundred and fifty dollars. Somehow this year, after the agreement, and I would like to see the bills on this, we came to a consensus also of, uh, top money being thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars not to exceed. Did we exceed that?
I would say we didn't.
I don't know either, but I, I, I would like to look at it, I mean, we, we let a lot of things just slide around here, and, uh, I think we need to start looking at stuff like that. And as I said, I, if you didn't deserve the money, give it back.
My understanding is everybody that was overpaid has come in and, and re-resolved, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, everyone, yep, everyone that had either something on there that wasn't filled out, um, or, like, Hillary, you know, had extra, or whatever, those all got paid back from people, um, and the, the way that it got filled out this year, that happened, Becky did that before I was here, um, but she had, there's a, there's a travel sheet, and she just filled out for everybody, she looked at the, I'm, I'm assuming the mileage from here to the hotel and, and back, and did that, um, and then she did the per diem of, of the seventy-five per day, and then parking for sixty, or something like that, sixty a day, so that's where the, the, the total came from, this year.
Yeah, I, I would like to reference that as well, but unfortunately, I've, I've asked the two appointed officials here for that information, and, uh, one was on October twenty-first, I had sent that email to you to request all the information, and checks that were cut and already cashed, and then the money that was returned, and then I texted Commissioner Cullen on, uh, November eleventh, I believe it was, and I never got any of that information either, so, I, it's hard to reference it when you can't even, you're not entitled to see it, I guess. I don't know what you gotta do to get stuff around here.
Well, so I look at two issues here, one, do we have a good process going forward, and my understanding is that we do, if there's still some concerns that, that the money was accounted for yet, we can, we can definitely look into that, so let's go around, first of all, I guess, is everybody happy with the process going forward?
I think the process going forward is fine, but the ordinance does allow for issue of check prior to the event, and I think that's what needs to be changed, because we can all sit here and say, yeah, that's the good policy, we can all follow it, then a whole new council comes in, and then we're back to.
I don't know if that was in there specifically, because we were, we were issuing the checks out before that policy was in there.
It was in the, I believe, the original ordinance from May, because in the top of this one that Austin and I were involved in, it says, whereas the council had previously said on May that checks can be issued before or after travel.
So, another history piece that, I think the one you're referring to that we approved in May, and Pat, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm looking at that one.
I think it was the one that we thought the city had approved like ten, twelve years ago, and did not.
Oh, okay.
So, is that correct, that, like, ten, twelve years ago?
We, we did a new travel ordinance.
Well, we updated it, though, but the first one.
And then we revised it again, I thought in May was the last time, that's the last one in my file. Do we have another one since then?
Then, in.
Austin?
October.
So, we have one from October seventh of twenty twenty-four, uh, and then we have, obviously, the one from May.
Those are the only two I'm aware of.
So the first one that we approved must have been the one that we thought we were operating under for like a decade, 'cause many, many years ago, they placed it on file, but it was never technically approved, and it's required by the state that we have that approved.
Yeah, the, the state statute's changed in that ten-year period, I can tell you, to require reapproval, and also, um, you guys have required, um, receipts and things for reimbursement, which I think is completely appropriate. How can you get money for something when you don't know exactly how much it's gonna cost yet? Makes no sense.
Right.
My suggestion is preapproval before you go, um, so that everybody knows what's been approved to spend, and then follow it up with a travel reimbursement, parking expense reimbursement form, uh, with receipts for all of your expenditures while you were there, and you'll get reimbursed to the exact penny.
I honestly think you could even do the mileage, if you can prove that you went to the, the conference, and I think you can, since there's five of us here that would say he wasn't there, but the mileage should only go from the City Hall building, you shouldn't be able to, if you live in, uh, champagne, or something like that, you couldn't, you'd have to live in Oglesby.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Rich, you gotta live your buddy.
Still do the same mileage from City Hall to the facility, is how I think it should be done, so, that, that could also be incorporated into the overall check. Um, but one thing I'd like to clarify is that I've talked to someone that has a little bit of history in town, understands it a lot better, and they, they stated to me that the stipend was initially created in nineteen ninety-five or ninety-six, and they have the history of that if it's necessary, so, just wanted to say that it wasn't done here just in two thousand and twenty-three, it had been done prior to that, quite some time.
I think probably the stipend was created originally, because people may have needed some money to be able to attend this event.
It was created at the time by the Commissioner of Finance, because up to that point, commissioners turned in their expenses with no cap, and the mayor approved or disapproved of them, they weren't sure if the problem was a question of the approval process or misuse of funds, that gave the commissioners all the same, and it was considered a fair amount.
Well, I think it's inappropriate, I think you should return in receipts and get paid for what you spent, that's what I think.
That's what I think. I know that was the argument that was made, that everybody gets paid the same amount, but my argument back to that was, now everybody incurs the same amount, depending if there's ride sharing or whatever it is, so. So again, I'll ask the question, is everybody good with the process going forward? That's the first part, I guess. Hearing none? Next thing is, is if there're concern, is there concerns out there yet that not all the money was recouped for whatever needed to be? Is that, if that's still a concern, we can look into that.
I just received the information. I would like to thank Aaron for, uh, paying attention to this prior to all of this, and warning that this could possibly be a problem.
Okay, all right, well, I guess unless something comes up new, uh, is this a done deal, or anybody else have anything else on it?
Uh, it is.
Okay, moving on. Um, B, code enforcement letter, current. Um, so, talking with some residents and finding out some of the things that we have not gotten resolved yet, a little over a month ago, we approved a process that allowed us to, um, send out a letter with violations that would assess a fine to people's utilities, uh, if we needed to do so, uh, because we realized that having the friendly approach wasn't working very well, um, and then we'd send out actual formal letters, but unless there was some teeth into it, we weren't actually getting some results, so it's been over about a month. So, um, I checked in with some of the departments that were doing it, and it seems like there is, of still, a little bit of confusion out there, so, that's why I thought I would, um, go around of what I think I understood as this was the consensus was here, and if anybody has anything, uh, that they think that's different than that, we can all, um, talk about that. So, let me read what I had sent out to everybody. So, let's see. "I'm concerned there's still some confusion on how we plan to tackle everything. Let me summarize what I think was discussed publicly on how we are handling these items, as it was believed we currently have the resources in-house to do these. If there is confusion or disagreement on that, let's talk about it publicly again, so we can put this to bed. If everyone's in agreement on what was decided, we can just carry it out, and with some K P I's to watch. One, in all cases of these violations, first and foremost, we are adopting the same mentality as the community policing strategy, in that, we attempt to have a friendly conversation with the violator, cite the reference of what's being done wrong, and establish a timeframe that they will fix it. I think Austin is working on something that we can track, whatever these are, first K P I wants established. Timeframe is to be given within the purview of the person delivering the news, maybe grass is seven days, maybe parking issues is seven days, maybe building code issues are two weeks or even a month, depending on what is reasonable to resolve. Number two, depending on what the violation is, we'll determine the expertise that will explain it to the violator. Examples, clear legal issues such as illegally parking in street, cars parked in people's front yards, grass too long, et cetera, Oglesby Police Department. Zoning-related things equals zoning administrator. Building code-specific items equals building inspector. Number three, if there's to be a home visit to deliver this news, in all cases, the Oglesby Police Department will accompany whoever the expert is. Number four, if the violation isn't resolved by the time that was discussed with the violator, a formal letter is issued with the citation in writing. Also citing our new ordinance that a one hundred dollar fee is being assessed to their monthly bill automatically for having to generate and send the letter. Uh, hopefully, this new step will cause many issues to no longer just keep coming back. Number five, if it's not resolved after the hundred dollar fee is issued and the deadline is passed, then we can go to our previous established means of placing liens on properties. It's our last K P I, which was never really a great long-term solution to see something fixed anyways, but hopefully with the new step in there, we'll start seeing some more things fixed, if this, if they see something actually added to their current, uh, wallet, not a threat just ten or twenty years down the road. That's my understanding of how we're moving forward with that. Okay, so now that I've said all that, is there anybody here that thinks that we have a different policy established that we talked about as consensus? I'll go around the room. Austin?
Um, no, I mean, that, that sounds like what we discussed, um, but, I don't know, I've talked to Hillary before this meeting, and I think my, what, my, uh, recollection of that discussion might have been a little bit off, I'll pass it to her.
Okay, Hillary?
No, I agree.
Okay. Matt?
Sounds about right, correct?
Okay.
I guess.
Rich?
I didn't agree with it then, I don't agree with it now, I think that the mayor should possibly send a letter to these people and inform them that we did have a meeting, a lot of people work, and they're gonna take their money from them, if they don't clean their yard anyway, so, I think you should send a letter to them and let them know that, hey, we're serious about this, it's a possibility even up to a lien you've claimed, uh, I think they should be notified possibly by the mayor, we're a small community, I think that would be the way to go with this, not send the cops to their house, or get ignorant with them immediately, 'cause all that does is cause bad blood, so I think a nice friendly letter from the mayor, I think that would be sufficient to begin with.
Okay, I'm not saying that's not a good option, I'm just, I, I think this is the first I'm hearing of that. I don't, has that been something that we discussed before? That the mayor sends a letter for property violation stuff? I don't think I've heard of that before. So, well, that would be a change to what we, what we've established.
And as I recall, the discussion at the time was that people who are familiar with the issue, a building inspector, a zoning enforcement officer, a police department employee, should be the one to really address the concern. Not that you're not a specialist at all those things, Jason, but it really throws a big burden on you to deal with issues that you might not be so familiar with.
What I think with you saying that, that the officers and that need to go to their house, that's getting personal, I mean, you're going knocking on their door, people get scared, they, they worry about what's going on, it's not a friendly con-, you know, confrontation there, it's a lot of them will get nervous right away, and then if they do have something, and they haven't cleaned it up, or haven't had the time, then they're defensive, and I, I just think a friendly letter would be much more appropriate to begin with here.
So one of the things we talked about in one of our earlier meetings on this was, uh, 'cause Austin and I, we talked to Marcells and Ottawa, and that's why they had a specific person designated, matter of fact, in Ottawa, it's their former chief of police, um, and does it as a part-time job, basically, so, the reason they did that is because that way they're not having a, a city employee or a city official, they have a designated person that's actually going around doing that, um, and I remember we brought it up here, and I think it was you that said, we think we have in-house resources to do that here, which, I, I don't disagree that we do, but the pushback that I'm getting is, I'm, I'm getting the impression that employees think that the council would not support them on that, that's why I wanted to have this conversation here, to make sure that that is not the case, 'cause if it is, then we need to go with a different method. Um, so, I'm, I think what I'm hearing is, that was the established plan, but now I'm hearing that at least one person wants to do something different, is that, is that also correct?
Yeah, I didn't wanna fine them to begin with, I would have known if you come over.
Um, well, the fines only after we still, I mean, 'cause the plan was that the community policing's been very effective in a city of our size, um, so, again, that's supposed to be just a friendly conversation when the police are there, just letting them know, hey, do you know this, this is in violation, blah, 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 and nothing happens, nothing negative happens out of it, if they get it resolved. Hopefully, that would solve ninety-five percent, and, and for the most part, I think from my understanding, when it comes to like grass issues and stuff like that, it does resolve most of the issues, it's the problems of the ones that completely ignore it, or don't do anything about it, that's where we needed to come up with something that was a little more serious. So we got one council member wants to do something different, are, is the rest of everybody else, do we have a majority that are still on board with the current plan, or do we need to make a modification?
Mike, m-, so, as far as the friendly letter's concerned, why can't the building inspector, the plumbing inspector, law enforcement, whoever's responsible for that?
I think that can.
Respect, authority.
Huh?
Respect and authority, I don't, I don't really have, I don't even know what, no, most people probably don't even know who the building inspector is.
Yeah.
What, what authority's gonna have, like, do they think he's gonna come and handcuff him or something, I mean, if it comes from the mayor, I think it's a little bit more respectful, has more authority.
I don't know if I like the idea of the mayor doing it, just because the mayor's in elected office, and that puts a lot of pressure, political pressure on the mayor to maybe pick and choose, I'm not saying that he would, but, you could have somebody in that seat who, well, you know, I really don't wanna upset this person, so, you know, I'm not gonna, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna, uh, I need this person's support, so I'm not gonna go knock on their door, and I, I, I kinda worry about that.
Do you think an officer would have the same concern? Like, if one of these officers went to, say, my house, and I come back here, and I'm, I flip out on all you guys, and why did you come there?
Well, sure. I.
Fire him, or?
Well, I think with the exception of the chief and the deputy chief, at least with the, the regular officers, most of them are, I think, basically all of them are union employees, and so they have a degree of legal protection there, um, and, so.
I don't have an issue with the mayor sending a letter, um, that, that's not an issue to me at all, the, the issue I have with that is, it's clearly things that are in other people's department to enforce, right? So that, that, to me, is, unless we're gonna say the mayor is the one to sign those letters, which, again, I'm fine with, uh, well, any mayor should be fine with that, there's nothing wrong with that. I thought we, we talked about the expert that is the one that's, whether, whether that's the zoning administrator, or the building inspector, 'cause, you know, is the mayor gonna come in and say, by the way, your siding is off on this thing, or your, your fence is not within standards of blah, 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 blah?
How's a building inspector gonna tell you about grass?
Well, that's why I think.
Or a car in your yard, what is the building inspector telling you, why would he be telling you about a car in your yard?
Well, I think.
Those were the legal ones, those are the clear legal ones that, that we, that.
They fell on the police department, I think, Rich.
Well, I think that's our problem, is that there's so much scattered around here that nobody has any direction, it's, it's not one person's job, so, I think you're doing something, you think I'm doing it, it doesn't get done, and that's, that's where we're at here, I think, nobody has direction.
My understanding is, like, in the summertime, the grass-related stuff was relatively.
Yeah.
Easy to do, I, I, I think that's been super effective. Um, it, it's, it's the other ones that haven't been, like, like, parking issues, or building code stuff with buildings, or fences that have not been rectified, or somebody put something up that they weren't supposed to, or, things like that are, that are a little more complicated. I, again, I was a proponent of hiring, making a part-time position for this, to do that, if, if that's gonna be an issue, but I think the argument was that we have the resources in-house, which I don't argue with, uh, that we do, I just wanna make sure that we're all on board with it, and that our employees and stuff are gonna be doing these things. I mean, if I have a majority that still wants to do that, we can do that, or we can look at another option.
Are there some instances that are troubling you right now, that just keeps giving?
Uh, I didn't have, I did not print that one off, I think in the email that I sent to both, uh, um, I sent it to the clerk, the chief of police, and. I think in the email that I sent to both, uh, I sent it to the clerk, the chief of police, and then I realized I should have had the building inspector on it. And then I think I CC'd both Hillary and Austin about it. I listed five or six of them that have, that residents have come to me specifically on in the past that I know have not been resolved. So, and, and I know we approved this thing, so I'm hoping that we're gonna get movement on it. I grant it, it's winter right now, so building code stuff is not the greatest things to be trying to enforce right now. But I, I'd still think we need to get mo- movement on all these things.
Hillary sent me the tech, uh, text the other day and I just now got back to her here. But, um, we need a, we're thinking of just having a meeting with, um, the, um, parties of interest. Um, and just hashing this out and going from there and getting everybody on the same page. Um, I think kinda what Rich said, there might be some miscommunication or not exactly super clear expectations as for what's supposed to happen, so.
And, and also, you are the mayor. You get the most complaints.
Right.
They have to be shared. Like, the email was like, what do we do with these park cart? Where? So that would be helpful if you're expecting something that.
Well, I usually send them. I usually forward them on. If I got a picture, sometimes somebody sends me a picture of something and they say, why is this like this? And then I'll, I'll send that on or something like that.
That's kinda why I think that there needs to be kind of one complaint log. Similar to the, the building permit thing that I sent out to everybody where you can access it and you can have, you have view access, you don't have edit access. But there needs to be a similar shared document where if any of us get a complaint about anything like that, whether it's people in city hall, whether it's the police department, we can add those in there and then we can track them, I think. I, I think that's.
And you said you're working on something like that, right?
Yeah, I, I think the police department has something along those lines. I'm not sure if that's exactly what we wanna use or, or what, but there does need to be something that we all have access to and we can all.
I think that is, is super important and super good that way. If anybody's fielding stuff like that, they can, they can check it and say, hey, yeah, it is being, it's being tracked or whatever. So you can answer that. So to me, that's a secondary thing. I think the first thing is we gotta work on the communication to make sure that we're going with it.
I agree.
Because I'd like to test, I feel like we haven't tested this yet. We, we've had this approved over a month and to my knowledge, no letters have gone out yet. So to me, it needs to be tested to see if this is, if this is actually gonna work. If it's not gonna work, then we need to go with something different. Because I'll be honest, even if those formal letters go out, I don't know about a letter from the mayor's gonna make much, if that's gonna, that's automatically gonna solve everything. I doubt that highly.
So can I ask this? Are, are we sending people out like the building inspector? I, I assume the police, but like, for instance, the building inspector, cause I, he would fall under me. Are we sending him out and proactively having him look for violations and then send letters?
I, I think as the, I, that's a whole other question because remember we talked about that, that part-time individual, that's what they did. They actually went around, they looked for violations and then they also spent some time sending letters and notifying people. I don't know if we need to be actively looking. I mean, I'm not saying that if we know of something that's an issue or we get a complaint of something, I think we should take action on it. But in, in the other examples I gave, it doesn't mean a cop has to knock on the door necessarily. Let's say we have the number of the individual and the, I'm, I'm just saying if somebody has to make a home visit, I think the police should be with, with them, whoever it is, right? I don't feel comfortable sending our city clerk out to somebody's home, uh, um, things like that. So I mean, if, if they have the number and say, hey, I just wanna give you a heads up, we got a, we got a notification. Uh, it looks like your, your lawn needs to be, uh, cut. It's over the number. Can, could you get that fixed by Friday, please? And if they say, yeah, thank you, okay, great. And if it's solved, it's solved. Nobody had to go to the house or anything. But if nobody's answering the phone and you need to go to the door, you gotta put something on the door, you gotta knock on the door, whatever it is. Remember we talked about, was it Marcells or Ottawa? They got the big sign?
Yeah.
They put these metal signs in people's yards and let them know they're under violation, which is a little aggressive.
I mean, as far, I agree with Rich. I, I kinda think you should probably send a letter before you knock on somebody's door. I, I do think that's, I don't know. But I mean, could you not send something out just like, so we have a record of everything, like certified mail?
Well, the problem is we, we specifically wrote a ordinance to say if we have to sign a le- send a letter.
Yeah.
They could fine the $100.
But with that being said, I mean, we could send like a, uh, yeah.
We could always attach something to the bill for that matter.
Well, that's, that's what the $100 comes in.
Well, I mean, a letter saying, hey, we need this fixed before we send the letter out for $100.
Could you not send out like a second letter for $100, send like an initial warning letter?
We could tweak the ordinance to indicate that the mayor or the clerk or somebody's gonna send an initial letter. But if it has to be followed up with a violation letter, then that hundred bucks would kick in.
You could send it with the bill and have them sign it and they receive it.
Yeah, I don't know if we necessarily need to put that in the ordinance because however the notification happens, that, whether that's in person, phone call, letter, we, we can do that. I'm, I'm good with any of those. I just wanna make sure that we're making that friendly attempt to let them know, say, hey, just so you know, you're aware, just so you're aware you're in violation, please get this resolved by, and that's why I'd rather have that conversation.
I, I think that's kinda where the, the sheet comes in. Um, I think that would be important because I, one of the things I think we'd have to list is, uh, the, the type of contact they had and who had that contact. Um, so, and on what date they had that contact.
And the remedy date.
Yeah, and the remedy date, so.
When the police department makes contact with people, they make a record in their, their system. So they do have the record, the date, more than, more often than not. And you say, we need to get a letter to see how it works. When the police call, they fix the issue, so.
Well.
I mean, the friendly knock on the door is.
And maybe most of, maybe most of the issues are working. I'm just, so I, there was like six items that I knew that were not resolved yet. That's been going for a long time. Well, maybe one of them might not have been, I guess one of them might not have been a violation in the first place. That's a whole other, other thing. My thing is, I think there does need to be a, a conversation because sending a letter doesn't go with our thought process of the community policing where everybody's friendly, right? Let's say the police show up and, and the chief could probably talk to this more, but let's say they should, let's say they talk to somebody on the phone and they say, hey, your grass is overgrown or whatever. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm on, I'm on vacation for two weeks. I'm not even in the area, you know? So a letter wouldn't solve that, cause a letter would be like, hey, if you don't get this solved by the end of the week, we're gonna slap you with a fine. You know what I mean? So having a conversation might be like, okay, I understand. Can you, can you get that fixed the day you get back? Great, thank you. Something like that, whatever it is. I think, I think whoever those experts are, they should have the levity to be able to.
The discretion to choose.
The discretion, not levity. Discretion to be able to resolve how they wanna resolve. I think as council members, our job is to make sure that we're progressing the right direction. And right now, I haven't seen any of that happen this last month. That's the reason I'm bringing it up.
What's odd is that I find it funny. That's kinda what I was saying back when you guys went ahead and hastily asked that. I said, we need to get it in order more, find out some structure to this. And you guys decided that you're gonna send this letter. We, we, I asked them, what do you, how do you, how do you stop someone from taking advantage of Billy's my buddy? He can let his grass grow, but Bob over here lets, he gets, he gets a ticket for $100 every, every couple of months. Why, why is that? You're given, there's, there's nothing set in stone here. And that's what I asked at the last meeting was make it more structured so that people know what's going on. The officers need to know what's going on. The person needs to know what's going on. This can't just be flying by the seat of your pants here and figure, oh, well, Bob's getting a ticket today. That's, I've had enough. It, it shouldn't be like that. Or if, like you said, someone's on vacation, you send them a letter and then the neighbor's grass is the exact same height. How do you, how do you handle that? You send that ticket?
Like I said, I think what Austin said there by having a log, that puts that in. If somebody puts in a formal complaint about whatever, it goes in the log. People can see it. Maybe there's a note that's made that, and again, I'm, I'm just kinda shooting from the hip here. Maybe there's a note that's made in there that the officer contacted them. They're in Florida for two weeks. They said they're gonna fix it the day they get back on this date.
So how do you rectify it then? Bob cuts his grass and the bill next door to him is on vacation. He never did cut his grass. And now Bob's really upset because the cops had to come and tell him, hey, you need to get your grass cut. And this guy next door never did cut his grass. So how do you, how, what position does that put him in?
I think if, I think if he rectifies it by the day he gets back, I, I don't really see an issue with it.
You, you know, as a person that, that got that and did the grass, you're gonna be upset that someone else did the exact same thing and didn't get in any, any problems at all.
Well, I mean, he did get spoken to. I mean, you know, he, there was an exception because he was out of town. Maybe there shouldn't be, are you saying there shouldn't be an exception because he was out of town?
I'm just saying you need to be more structured. Dirt, dirt has to be cut and dry. You can't have.
I, I agree with that, but I think you're getting too granular saying this to, to that specifically. My thing is, as long as we're moving in the right direction for everybody, that's all that matters. And nobody should get a fine put to them if they legitimately didn't know that they were in violation. That's my only fear, right? I, I, I don't wanna hear about any, any good residents out there that literally didn't know that they were making a mistake and all of a sudden they get a $100 fine. I don't want that to be happening. However, people that willfully say, screw it, I'm not doing something, whatever, and it's making other people angry. I don't have a problem with those people getting a $100 fine, cause I think that's what will start solving problems.
Well, I feel like that's why I passed the, the administrative fee and I was gonna let the police department determine the discretion when it's appropriate to apply the administrative fee or not. And they would know because they're making the contact. They're out there. They see if it's been cleaned up or not.
I think there has to be some discretion involved with this stuff. And, and no matter what you do, I get it. That guy that gets the two-week thing because he's on whatever, he happens to be the police officer's best friend or something like that. Those things are going to happen. It's gonna look like that or whatever. But to me, at the end of the day, are we doing the right thing and are we solving problems?
Yeah, I, I will say though too, I, I think that, like a lot of things, we, we obviously need to do the best job that we can do. But at the end of the day, we could do this totally perfectly, cross our Ts, dot our Is, and you're still gonna have people that are gonna complain about it and say, oh, they're targeting me. They're doing this, they're doing that. And so, I mean, at the end of the day, sometimes you just gotta be the bad guy and you can't make everybody happy.
So, okay, I'm, I'm hearing at least one commissioner thinks there should be a different route to go about this, but I think we have consensus to go forward. I think we need to have some better communication.
We definitely do, yeah. And that's, I, I'll, I'll take responsibility for that. I, I should have been more proactive.
So how about this? If you guys wanna get together, come up with how you think the better communication and the tracking or whatever, we can readdress this again in, in January. My big thing is, right now I can't even tell if it's a, if it's a failure or not, right? Cause we haven't sent the letters out to even see if we can get fixes yet. So we need to get to that point to where we can happen. And then if it's not working, we'll readdress it. Anything else on this topic?
Have we determined who the, who the person is that's going to the doors and, or even making first contact? It's the police or is the building inspector? Or has decided upon what the problem is?
As I said, it's, as I think we all said, it's depending upon what the problem is. If it's a zoning-related issue, then it's a zoning administrator. If it is a building code-specific related issue, then it's the building inspector. If it's any kind of legal thing, obvious legal thing, parking, citation, whatever it is, then it'd be the police.
That also begs the question, who's the zoning administrator?
I think it says it in, I think, isn't our city clerk the zoning administrator?
It's not a contract.
Right now? Oh yeah, that was one of the two items. I wanted to make sure that got in there, but we didn't go into closed session that night. I remember now. I don't have an answer for that. I guess that, I don't know if that defaults to you in the meantime, which is unfortunate, cause then we go back to the same thing where the elected official is, uh, having to do that.
I can do it.
We'll probably have to do, it'd be, have to be between the, the building inspector and the, uh, the police department then at that point. Okay. Anything else? All right. Number nine, new business. A, property tax levy on file. Cullen?
Uh, yeah, so, um, sat down with, um, Paul Danikus, the city's treasurer, uh, prior to the last city council meeting. And he put together, uh, proposed tax levy for, uh, 2025, 2026. Two big things of note. One is that the rate for the city, uh, will be decreasing. Um, and he attributed this to an increase in net assessed valuation after the county came out and reappraised everybody's properties uh, last year, the year prior or something like that. Property values went up. Uh, and so with that being said, uh, the city can bring in more money at a lower rate. The current rate is 2.12336 and, uh, using his, um, proposed numbers, that would drop to 2.04932. Uh, with that being said though, um, the city would still bring in an additional $81,000 for 2026. So, um, sent this out to everybody. I think it was after that meeting, um, and you have it in front of you, so that's what I got.
Okay, go around the room. Anybody has any other comments? Moil?
Nope.
Matt?
No, I don't have any comments on this.
Aldridge?
No.
Okay. I don't have much other, just, uh, thank you, Paul, for, for putting all this together again. You know, we're, we're just under the amount that we don't have to, I mean, just barely, but we're under the amount. We don't have to do a truth and taxation hearing. Uh, I think we're placing it on file today and then, uh, unless there's any crazy changes, it'll get approved at the, uh, next meeting. If there's nothing else, uh, if we can get a motion to place it on file.
I will motion that we place on file, um, the tax levy for 2025, 2026.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge?
Hi.
Cullen?
Hi.
McDermott?
Hi.
Moil?
Hi.
Curran?
Hi. B, discussion and possible action on intergovernmental.
Excuse me, can I interrupt you for a second? Austin, did you see my note about abating the bond levy that's already in place? So in 2013, the city, uh, adopted a refunding bond ordinance. And that ordinance establishes a levy every year over and above the levy we just placed on file. And this year, it's $167,820, uh, which will be levied in addition to the levy you already have in place. Unless you abate it, which you have done every year since 2013. So I'm assuming you want me to draft an abatement ordinance for adoption at the next meeting too?
So normally we do that every year. You know what? I apologize. We have two people in the council. That is one of the things I should have caught and, and realized. Cause I think we do, we place both on file and we approve next.
Well, you don't have to place the abatement ordinance.
The abatement we can, we can place on file and approve with the same one?
Yeah.
Perfect.
You, you, you don't need to place that one on file, cause you're actually cutting expenditures, not increasing it. And I assume that's what Paul wants to do too, cause he's got here, bonds and interest extended by county clerk, zero. So I think he wants us to abate that and just levy this amount of money. You can double check with him if you want, Austin, but I'm gonna work on the assumption that you'll wanna abate that at the meeting at the same time.
Yeah, it doesn't look like he factored it, so.
Remind me again, if we don't do that, what happens is everybody else gets a higher tax thing, but then they get it back at the end. So if we abate it, it stops that from.
I don't know where you're coming with the get it back at the end. They're just gonna collect more tax revenue next year. And, uh, everybody's gonna pay more than 105 percent essentially.
Well, I would suggest that we retract our.
Well, no, that, that's still placed on file. Normally, I guess we would normally place on file this other one. Normally we do two, the levy and then this ordinance, but we didn't prepare the ordinance, so.
Well, and that's because I didn't have any direction from you guys. I could have presumed that you wanted me to do it, but it doesn't have to be placed on file. And I would suggest you adopt it unless you want that levy to extend, which will.
I think if that's been the past practice, I don't see an issue with doing it.
I don't think it's an issue. I, unless, do we need a motion to, to have him direct that? I think we just, we, we get it, cause it's been done every year and we just place it on file and approve it at the next meeting.
I'll, I made a note to bring it to the next.
Does anybody have an issue with that?
Okay.
Do we have any intra-fund transfers, Austin? Sometimes we address that at this time of year too. Where you wanna move money from water and sewer over to general or vice versa or whatever. Are there any of those, Jen, that Paul has talked about? No?
No, we, we haven't had to do anything. Um, he, he would have known before, cause he would have had everything if you guys did it before I got here. And we haven't had to do any of that since I've gotten here.
Just keep it on your radar in case you do.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll check all that to make sure we don't have any surprises for the next meeting.
Well, and your fiscal year doesn't end until the end of April, so we have plenty of time to do that. A resolution, but not the abatement. No, the abatement has to go in with your levy. So the county clerk has everything in their file to know what they're gonna extend for this year.
Okay. All right. Uh, B.
Sorry, Jason, I'm gonna keep interrupting you here.
That's all right. B, discussion and possible action on intergovernmental agreement to participate in the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network. Moil?
So this gotta sign me and I really don't know why, because it's Public Works, but I'll give it a shot. Um, I guess this will allow us to use other cities' participation after a duratio or some kind of large event. So then it would be specific to water, sewer, and electric.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't know why I got it.
I'm sorry, I should have read it a little better. I was thinking mutual aid, like ambulance, police, fire. That was my thought.
I, I can speak to it first, then that's fine. So, um, I don't know when the last time we've done one of these. Gentlemen, do you know if the last time you responded to one of these IP workman things?
No.
The last time I think I did something was around the duratio timeframe. That's when resources can come in, whether we ask for resources or, or they ask for us. I think we've been asked a few times to, I can't even remember what they were, but there's times that we have sent help out to other locate minor things like that. And then we can request help to come in. So, um, I looked at it over. It didn't look like there was really much change. I think it was about, uh, notification items on there. Uh, of who makes up the board or something like that. The biggest thing I was interested in when I looked at it was if there was any changes to any rates or how it's paid. How it's paid is the same as the IMEA thing. Whoever comes in, we pay them at whatever their rate is that they have in their contracts or collective bargaining agreements, whatever it is. We abate that exact, I bait, I got the word bait in my damn mind now. We, we spend the exact amount, uh, for what that cost is. So, uh, anybody else wanna talk about it? They can. Go around the rest of the room. Matt?
I, oh, I got a lot to read up on it and I'll make sure everything's done fair and across the board.
Is one of you guys seeing those texts? So I used to see all those, like every month, there was a test that come out for it all as commissioner, but I.
I don't believe I'm seeing it.
Never heard anything about it. I.
I haven't, I haven't.
After Commissioner Moil alerted me that it didn't actually have anything to do with mutual aid in the police.
Right.
I reviewed it a little bit. Um, I believe what you were referring to was when the IMEA was called and. and, uh, we had our cooperative program with them. I don't know that we've ever utilized this program here. Um, it would be anyone, anywhere in this area, I don't know what the radius is, could call us on even a, just a, a day where it's raining outside, or anything. There, there doesn't have to be an emergency, or anything like that. And I don't know who would eat the costs on that. It, it appears we've been doing this since about two thousand nine, I believe I read. I've never heard of it. I don't know.
Yeah. So the duratio thing for the electrical stuff was, it was a different one? That's a different mutual aid agreement we have. Uh, we actually have two of them. We have one with just LAD, Princeton, and Peru, and us. And then there's the greater one, where we need to bring in bigger resources from outside from the IMEA. But however, in that case, for example, I think one of, there was a cleanup truck that came through at Head Highway Road, because there was debris all over the place. And it was more than our, uh, street department could handle, so they actually brought somebody in for that. But we have sent other resources out in the past. So, I'll have to dig through my phone. I don't know what... That, that should've transferred to you guys, then, if you're not seeing those messages. Because there's like a test message that comes, used to come out every month anyways. And then every once in a while, if somebody's having an emergency, you would see something come in. And if you're guys were available, you could send your resources to them. So, um, I'll see if I can find a little contact for that, so that way you guys can get access to that.
I'd appreciate that.
Okay. Uh, anybody have anything else?
Do we have to re-up this agreement, or...?
I thought I saw it as a...
I haven't seen it, but it says impossible action, so. That told me somebody thought something needed to be done.
Well...
But you, I don't know that there's any urgency to it. If you wanna take a look at it between now and the next meeting, you could just table it and have a better understanding of what you're...
Well, I mean, obviously, I don't wanna approve anything if our attorney hasn't seen it yet. I mean, I looked through it, and I, all I really looked for was the rates, to make sure we're gonna pay something crazy. Um, I would recommend we send it to Pat. Take a look at it, and if it's good, we can approve it at the next one.
Make a motion to table.
I second that motion.
Roll call, please.
I'm gonna see it myself.
Uh, Baldridge.
Hi.
Cullen.
Hi.
McDermott.
Hi.
Moyle.
Hi.
Curran.
Hi. Number ten, public comment on any topic.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Commissioners. It's nice to see you guys again. I hope everybody's doing well.
That's what I expected.
I'd like to provide some clarity regarding the, uh, agenda item on travel this evening. I'd just like to set the record straight here. The commissioner in two thousand twenty-three didn't start the process or make the decision solely. That wasn't the case at all. What actually happened in the past was a consultation with other council members and the city clerk. And just to be specific here, I'm talking about travel to the Illinois Municipal League Conference, where every single council member attended, including the city clerk and the chief of police. Uh, we considered what would be the easiest way to pay for the Illinois Municipal Training Conference, that every council member and the city clerk and the police chief would all attend together. And we followed a past practice that was used even prior to the council before us. Uh, a mileage rate for, uh, everybody attending would be identical, because everybody was traveling from Oglesby to downtown. So that number is fixed. It was the same. The cost of a standard hotel room for each person attending was identical, since they were all booked prior to the conference. What would happen is, is that the clerk would decide, or, or get information as to who was planning on attending. She would book the rooms, she would book the standard parking. Um, the only dynamic was the cost of meals, and due to the event being held in the city of Chicago, uh, there's, uh, essentially various things that could happen here. And I want you guys to think about this as you keep talking about this, because as somebody who's been there, I'm seeing you kinda go in circles with it. So the example that I give you is this. Commissioner A comes back with a receipt for forty dollars for a pizza dinner, and mayor or other official comes back with a receipt for two hundred dollars for a steak dinner. There's obviously a big difference there. And then we start getting into a, a period of where now we're gonna qualm, or we're gonna quibble about, well, wait a minute, you spent two hundred dollars, I only spent fifty dollars. So, the majority of group at the time agreed the easiest way was a per diem amount of a hundred dollars per day, per person, which would cover the meals and fuel for your vehicle to drive down. That's how we got to that part. Uh, this per diem allowance was reflected in the bills, and it was available to any public reviewer. There was no objection raised, uh, or issue by, uh, then and current city attorney, the Honorable Pat Berry. You're welcome, Pat.
Thank you, Tony.
Uh, all other events of individual attendance would require the council member to submit the information for council approval. The intent was that a consensus could be achieved, and transparency to the taxpayer, as to where the person was going, and the cost, and what the benefit to the city was. So I wanna, I wanna stress that and emphasize that there's a difference here. We're talking about group travel, where everybody was going, where it was basically a rubber stamp, because everybody was on the same page, or there was nothing to argue about. When an individual went to travel, this is where it came up of what's the benefit to the city, so that everybody could feel good about making the approval. Uh, this was all considered and, uh, and done transparently, with allowance for debate. The final result was that an ordinance was passed, uh, and the council moved on to consider more pressing matters like how to fund a wastewater treatment plant mandate. So finally, I wanna point out to you folks, you're the ones who make the decisions on travel, not the commissioner who was here in two thousand twenty-three. Whatever you choose to do, that's your call. What, this is the way that it was done in the past. What I just explained to you is exactly what was done in the past. Um, and I just wanna emphasize that elected officials are supposed to be here to serve, not wine and dine on the taxpayer dime. And I'm, I'm proud to say that myself and the people who went before were very cognizant of that, and that's how we came up to that per diem. So with that, I wanna say thank you for letting me come up here and clarify that for you, and I hope that gives you the ability going forward to get this all worked out. So, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right. Are there any other public comment on any topic? Seeing none. Number eleven, commissioner reports. Commissioner Cullen.
Uh, yes, uh, just three things. Um, uh, in the office this week, um, Erin has training Wednesday, uh, with somebody from Civic Systems. Uh, again, regarding that customer portal, I asked her today, just to confirm my estimate that, um, this should be done by the end of the year, uh, or early January, and she says that sounds about right. So, again, that's coming down the pipeline. Um, one of the things, uh, that I decided upon, or we decided upon, maybe is the better way to put it, um, is that to incentivize people, uh, to pay their bills online, because we do have a large number of people who come in and pay cash for bills, um, for which there's no fee. Um, there is a fee if you come in and pay credit card, but, or pay online through our current bill pay provider. Uh, one of the things that we're going to do is, uh, waive the credit card fee uh, for people who pay their bills online, uh, in order to try and get more people moved over to that. Um, there are, just sitting in the office, and I've probably, as far as, I've, I've spent a few days in there. Um, but there are really a lot of people who come in, in person, to pay bills, uh, and it is, um, uh, it's, I think it's great to see their faces. I think everybody likes the, the in-person connection, but, uh, it is, it does make the office a very busy environment. And so that's kind of, um, we're gonna try and incentivize people to pay online as much as possible by waiving that credit card fee. Uh, the last thing, uh, is that Santa Claus will be coming tomorrow to Seneca Square. Between, uh, tomorrow, December second, and December ninth to Seneca Square. Uh, between five to six, uh, children will, again, be able to enjoy hot cocoa and take a picture with Santa. And I believe that is all I have for tonight.
So what you're saying is Santa Claus is coming to town?
Uh, I believe that would be correct, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Moyle.
I wanna thank Nobelsdorf and We Are Oglesby for thanking our emergent, or our first responders on November twenty-sixth. They provided Thanksgiving meal kits created by two brothers. They provided eleven fetus children Thanksgiving meal kits, fifteen to Meals on Wheels, and eight to our first responders, and two meal kits to the pad shelter. And in addition to that, they continued their generosity by donating five hundred dollars to the food pantry. So, thank you. Um, as far as statistics for the month of November, the police department has conducted seventy-four traffic stops, four hundred and eighteen business park and house checks, five accident reports, assisted EMS thirty-six times, and completed twenty-two incident reports. For the fire department, there are nineteen total calls, six vehicle accidents, four auto aid, three activated alarms, two rescues, they assisted with the turkey trot, one vehicle fire, and one controlled burn. And then lastly, with the ambulance, they had fifty-five nine-one-one calls, one event standby, five transfers, and seven ALS intercepts for a total of sixty-eight calls. That's everything I have.
Thank you. Commissioner McDermott.
Well, I first need to ask residents to please do not shovel snow out on the city streets, as this creates a safety concern for everybody. Um, please don't do that. Um, we gotta think of everybody. Also, I would like to reassure residents that although it might've been done in the past, the city cannot plow personal alleys, as this is a liability to the city and could create a hazard as well. We have the wastewater treatment plant that is on schedule, as planned, and hopefully, we get the dry bridge done. I'd like to also thank, uh, Don Finley for his concern about the, uh, lights and moving it so the safety of the residents and the semi-drivers can get through there. Thanks, Don.
Go ahead, Mitch. Commissioner Baldridge.
Uh, last night, the electric department was called out. They worked all night. The GTI transformer had gone out. Problem was it kicked out the whole west end. The transformer's bad. Uh, they replaced it. They were able to get the west end up quickly with a new switch. They had to check everything in GTI. They finally got them going a hundred percent as the transformer went bad. It was for the newest section. That was hardly anything in that section yet. Uh, it's not under warranty, so they probably will be purchasing a new one, and, uh, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Number twelve, mayor's report. Uh, first thing, just like Austin said, uh, Santa and hot cocoa will be at the Seneca Square's, uh, Santa Hut on December second and December ninth, plus tomorrow, starting tomorrow, uh, from five to six, three P M. And also, Santa will be at, uh, the Dickinson House from two to four P M on the thirteenth, which is, uh, so that'll be ending about an hour right before We Are Oglesby's parade kicks off at five P M. So, I think this is their third, I think it's their third. Um, if it's not, well, am I that right? Could be third, could be fourth. It is third?
Third.
Okay. Third, and super excited. It keeps getting bigger and better every year, so hats off to them, and we look forward to that event. Uh, number two, Ameren Transmission Line. So, um, so I had been contacted by Ameren, by their public, uh, public affairs people, um, last week. Um, so there is a transmission line that kinda goes through the city. Um, mostly kinda goes along, um, Oakwood, goes up around Arbor Street. It goes through a lot of people's, uh, residential, residential backyards and things like that. So, apparently, that, that line has been de-energized, and they're looking to remove it. However, they didn't reach out to anybody ahead of time, and they thought their construction crews are gonna start tearing it down last Monday, the week of Thanksgiving. So I was able to get them to stop, uh, on doing that, at least in the residential areas. So, here's what's going on. Ameren is looking to remove an old transmission line that's no longer being used. The lines go through the city, uh, and go through many people's yards right now. The good news is, the lines are going to be removed, and the poles. So everybody should be happy about that. If you have a house that's affected by it, you're gonna get, uh, the pole and the lines all removed, and the land's gonna be restored. The bad, it's gonna be relatively inconvenient, because they gotta get some heavy equipment in there to do so. So, starting tomorrow, they're gonna start, uh, knocking on people's doors and putting door hangers up there, trying to get ahold of, uh, the homeowners to coordinate with them the best time to be able to get the equipment in there to remove all the stuff. So, um, so if you wonder why somebody's walking around knocking on your door, or what they're trying to get ahold of you for, it is a good thing. They're trying to remove all the stuff that you don't wanna have anymore. So, um, and the last thing I have is, I put it out on, on Facebook, but just so you know, our, our city clerk was able to put on the city's main webpage. It's on the main page, if you scroll all the way down. Uh, Oglesby, our hometown. This was the nineteen oh-two to two thousand two book that was done. Uh, the state of Illinois, uh, Governor's Award, uh, gave us our hometown award for it, because it was such a great project. There's a lot of people, uh, that, that were part of making that project that are not here anymore. Uh, there's a few people that are still here. Their names are right, recorded in the book. You cannot get a physical book for it anymore. However, the clerk's office happened to find an old C D of it, actually. So, if you were to try to get this C D downloaded back in two thousand two, it probably would've taken you about two days. Now it takes about fifteen to twenty seconds. So, it's on there. Um, there is a little weird, I didn't talk to you about this yet, there's a little weird glitch where it says click here. That doesn't work. If you click on the picture of it, you can download that file. It's a great file to have. Uh, it's a three hundred and thirty-one-page, uh, book of the history of Oglesby. And again, a lot of residents put it together, put a lot of work onto it. So, that's all I have. Uh, number thirteen, executive session four. The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, five L C S one twenty slash two C one, and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees, or the representatives, or deliberations concerning the salary schedules for one or more class of employees, five L C S one twenty slash two C two. That's all. And after that, I have a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion, go into executive session.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge.
Hi.
Cullen.
Hi.
McDermott.
Hi.
Moyle.
Hi.
Curran.
Hi. And there is no planned actions after executive session. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
I tweeted at Captain Owen.
Uh, she's not like, I don't know. I haven't received any of your comments, no, except for you.
Please move your card.
Okay? Um, but looking forward, when you talk about the size of the complaint is the size of the vehicle that's parked on the lot, I, I know what that is.
Oh, I get it, I get it. I understand, I understand. I get a complaint. They're not supposed to...
Are you driving up in the morning, Jason?
I have to go to, uh, yeah, I have to, my flight's at 7:30 tomorrow morning, so...
God.
I know, not fun. Hey, we should, maybe put the Christmas tree in the corner there. Because there used to be a door there before, so now that there's no door, maybe that would look really nice in our, in our shot.
Perfect, yeah, we can do that.
Cool. Yeah, we got everybody here. Second open session, roll call please.
Baldridge.
Here.
Cullenan.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Moyle.
Here.
Curran.
Here, number 14, adjournment, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second amendment.
Roll call please.
Baldridge.
Aye.
Cullenan.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Moyle.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye, we are adjourned.
No, but I didn't understand what you and Mark sent me, Richard, we could go Friday. So are you talking about a different path?
If we have to pay for a different path, then that's what they have to do.
Has anybody talked to those landowners?